Sergeant Seminyak is there and we appreciate his presence. We will start the meeting with an opening prayer. And I don't have the...
Doesn't say...
Okay, thank you.
Father of heaven, we are humbled to come before thee as a council representing the fine people of this town. We ask, as always, for thy guidance and inspiration in the best way to govern and to make decisions with wisdom to the benefit of our citizens. We ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. We'd like to ask Hughes Councilor Edmonds, who cannot be in on this today. All right. We are going to adopt the agenda. There's a few additions to those items of the agenda. On the 10th, we go into talk about the terms of the golf course as given to you in the addition belief. We need to amend that slightly. Under 5B...
So that's under 10A they were putting that?
Yeah, please. Under, yeah, question regarding the golf course, new motion that was made.
Does that even camera mirror?
No, it doesn't need to be. 5B minutes of the special meeting of the golf course need to be approved.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. 5B, no, they were not. So 5B and 10A might work together in conjunction. Okay. Now, we will need to put some item in camera, confidential item, that have to do with the hiring of a new C A O.
C A O replacement.
Yeah.
12A.
12A. All right. Are we good? So those are the additions. Councilor Banbury?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as...
Can you give me a second? Maybe I forgot an item.
Did we get the planning session date as an addition?
Under 10B?
No, 7D.
Oh, you're right. Sorry, I missed it. 7D, planning session, we need to add that. We need to get a date.
Planning session.
Okay, tell us about the planning session.
It's a review of our planning that we did. Every year we review it and make sure that it is...
This is like a Saturday meeting?
Annual review.
Yeah. Okay. So now, Councilor Banbury, entertain your questions.
So my motion still stands?
So now, Councilor Banbury, entertain your questions.
So my motion still stands and will accept the agenda as...
On favor? Thank you. All right, now we have a delegation and Sergeant Seminyak, if you'd like to come and address this regarding the report and maybe give us a little bit of an update on the goals that we had set up.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, I'll start with our fourth quarter policing.
Thank you.
As far as personal offenses in the fourth quarter, there was 16, which was down from 26 last quarter, which is a difference of 10. Property offenses were also down, with 53 for the quarters, that was down 33. Other criminal code was down from 78 to 46, which is a difference of 32. Provincial statutes minus traffic were down considerably by 97. Provincial traffic were increased by 4 to 50. Provincial traffic were increased by 4 to 55. And the rest stayed below the same, minus intoxicated persons lodged in cells, which was 172 in the third quarter to 94, which is a difference of 78, which I'm sure everyone's interested in.
Yes. Really great. Can you give us a sense of how this happens or what is your force doing?
I would attribute it to being winter and the colder months.
Right, that's what I wanted.
With the prisoner count being down, that has to do with Blood Tribe Police Service lodging most of their prisoners in standoff now, as opposed to the happened here. I brought that up with them because it increases our liability and we can't have the lodging people in our cells when we're not there. So that's where that increase comes from.
Oh, question then.
Sure.
When you say you're not there, don't you have a staff that looks after the lodging there?
We do, but not a police officer there to take over custody of that prisoner, we said.
How come there's not a police officer there?
Because we don't, we're coming four hours a day, so there's no one there between 3:00 and 7:00, or if we're out on calls beating Hillspringe, Glenwood, out in the county.
So if there is a prisoner in there, comes in at midnight, you're saying they have to escort it out?
No, no.
Okay, I just want to understand.
Probably picks up Blood Tribe Police Service prisoner.
They'll be taken there automatically?
They lodge in standoff.
Okay. What, since, when did this happen?
New call. That's what I brought it to their attention. And it comes down to liability. As soon as someone is in our cells, we're responsible.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I have something to add to that.
Reduce liability where we can.
Okay, thank you.
How does that, I'm not quick, I still have another question. How does that affect the staff that you do have hired to look after the lodging?
Because there's less hours.
They just get less hours and they're only there during the daytime?
No, no, they're still, like, if we have prisoners and we still have guards too.
Yeah.
But we don't have, there's not always a guard there now, all day and all night, because it's decreased the numbers and it's based on mostly the prisoners that we have.
Okay.
All right, makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe if you'd like to address a little bit your take on the goals that we had set up?
Sure. So the three for last year were traffic, safety, and police and community relations. As far as, we had looked at an increase in provincial traffic offenses. So last year, there was a goal set of 400 for the year, and with this one here, we're in our third quarter. So that kind of makes things a little different based on the calendar. So we have one more quarter to go with this one. So so far this year to date, on the third quarter, which ended in December, we have threats 376, which is close to last year's number of 400. Will we get to 600? We'll have to see where that goes by the end of the quarter. Check stops, three last year, had a goal of 20 for this year. We've done 10 so far with the public safety aspect. And that came through safety crime prevention through environmental design, kind of didn't fit the mix, so we'll have to look at tweaking that one for the coming year. That had the cause disturbance initiative in it. From zero in the previous year, we're looking at a goal of 30. So far this year, we've had 18. Increase in municipal bylaw violations.
So that bylaw is essentially the goal, is that that's what we're not dealing with?
That's it. Houston media messaging, zero the year before, the goal of 20 of this year, and right now, we've had nine. And then down to the third one, police and community relations, which is downtown foot slash bike patrols, which is more foot patrols for here. 33 was the number for last year. This year's goal was 75. Right now, we're at 32. So we're one shy of the totals for the year before. School visits, R C P presentations, and attendance at community events. The number for the year before was 20, with a goal of 50 for this year, and apparently sit at 30 based on his own guess. And then our other one was more for the rural policing that we do, which is village patrols in Glenwood, Hillspringe, and Mountain View, which had zero documented the year before, with a goal of 50 for this year, and right now, we're seeing 18. So with that, I mean, now is the time that you were talking about planning, and we start to look at that, so it's something we all need to think about for the goal for next year.
Yeah, and that's something we love to invite you to that session and to be able to try to see how we can together, work together.
Yeah, it's not always about increasing numbers, but maybe doing, you know, different aspects differently and better, essentially.
Right. Okay, council, any questions for Sergeant?
No questions?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to add on your property fences, and they're the things that all, the decreases that have gone down, is that typical of this winter?
Winter.
How are we compared to last year?
That I don't have that with me today, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how consistent that, those numbers are. That was the first thing on my mind, was the cold.
No, but absolutely. Something like that, if you want to pop in and see me, we can definitely look it up. The door is always open, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
How are you for manpower, Sergeant?
Still about the same. We're still shy one core.
One core.
Yeah.
That's better than three.
Yeah, no doubt. So, yeah, we're still waiting on Ryan and Sundry. He's still trying to sell this house so I can attest.
Where is he coming from?
Sundry.
I thought it was Silver Lake.
Okay. The only question I have is regarding the loitering policy. I know how difficult it is to enforce in court if you don't have witnesses that come forward. Essentially, it must be fairly discouraging to your force, knowing that when you go to court, it's thrown out of court as fast as it comes in.
It can be. It's one of those analogies where you explain to people that you do the best you can, you carry the ball as far as you can, and then you pass it on, hoping that the next part of your team can carry on the process, which isn't always the case.
Right. So that is an area that is still a concern to our community, no doubt.
Yeah, absolutely.
No doubt, and we see increase of loitering in our town, visibly is there, we can't deny that. So to us, that is an area that we would love to explore during our strategic planning, really is an area of concern.
Yeah, and it's a good way of putting heads together and coming up with different ideas to...
Right. Yeah, maybe explore different way of doing business.
Which I think, looking at it probably a crime reduction strategy, may fit that category a little better.
Okay.
Something definitely to keep in the back of your mind.
Thank you very much, and I look forward working with you, and I'm sure we all feel the same. And thank you so much to all your force for protecting our community and doing what you do in our community, so pass it on to your detachment. Thank you.
We could solve a lot of these problems in the town if we just had cold weather all year round.
That's how they solve it?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of... We won't have a motion to that effect.
Thank you. All right.
Leaving.
We're a little bit early, but I see that our second delegation is there. Brad Biese is going to address us on regional collegiate steering committee. Please come forward. We're happy to have you and thank you for taking time to address us on this important subject.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Just, I'm sure that you have a copy of the letter that the steering committee, we met after the first of the year, to give you a quick rundown, and I'm sure the other council members may have updated you, they were also at the meeting. But we've been working with Southern Virginia University, and things were looking positive there, and then President Szabrowski passed away, which is, I would say, probably not really put a hold on things, but it deterred things further down the road, the new president's trying to get their feet underneath them and go and look at the things and what they're going to be doing and so on and so forth. So as a steering committee, we met after the Christmas and, or before Christmas, and decided that we either need to look at this very...
Aggressively.
Aggressively and/or either do it or get out and not mess around with it. And so we feel like that if we, as a board, find a person that would be qualified, have the energy, have the interest, the passion to go out and look at these other options that I made in the points. And there is many options out there. We don't need to just hang our hat with S V U. There's, there is universities like Athabasca in Alberta that we could attach our hat to and many other things. So I think that we need to explore those options, but that comes with a cost. We're not looking to pay this person a wage, but I believe that we need at least a four, five, maybe six month period to really turn over any options. Yes, work with S V U, work with Google, work with the Microsoft in doing things. Obviously, that brings the money to the table as well, and that's huge, to get accreditation and to get set up so that we can receive funds in a fashion that we can then give tax credits. And all of these things takes time, and as volunteers on this committee, we don't have that time. So we'd like to get someone who does have the time, but we would like to cover their expenses, and hence, we're coming to the town to support us in any way in paying actual expenses verified and proved.
Can I say something, Brad? Do you have somebody on the board presently that could fit that bill?
And Robin.
Well, I know it's a working matter.
Bill, maybe I can comment. I don't honestly know that really could put the time in. Do I have some ideas of some individuals that could do that in the community? Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that there isn't those that are outside of the community also that we couldn't get on a, you know, on a, we're just going to cover your expenses. If you have to go to Edmonton and visit, you know, that's what we're looking at.
Okay. I appreciate what you're saying. I think your request is reasonable. I know there's a source of funding if we really desire to see that option being approved, so I need you, council, to give me a sense or to put a motion forward.
Just a question, what kind of dollars are we talking?
Five, six thousand, essentially.
Five to six thousand?
Well, I mean, obviously, we'd take as much as we can get, but...
By six thousand, we can afford out of the economic development budget, which this fits the bill of economic development.
Okay, well, having said that, and with that, basically, I'm...
Just wait a minute.
I might have to make a motion if you're not...
But even if you make a motion, we can...
No, I feel that this is a very important project.
Let me comment on kind of the thing that you're asking. The five or six thousand, honestly, yes, that's great, because that, we're going to be very frugal, we're also going to look at, you know, how can the steering committee get maybe some other funds if we need it, but this gets us started down a path where if the person that's going to take this on needs to go to Edmonton, no, we're not going to fly them in a Learjet, we're going to say, hey, drive.
Drive and give you mileage.
And give us mileage and we'll give you gas. And that's what we need that initially for, to see as we kick those things over and look underneath them and say, do we really have legitimate options here and is it really possible to get the funding? Because honestly, a university idea is a great idea, but it doesn't come cheap, and there's many universities in the world that have gone under. So let's face it, this isn't, the university itself is not a moneymaker.
Yeah.
It's, if we can do this properly, get some real good experience and get things set up properly in the beginning, break even, then of course, the offshoots of that will benefit the town and the community, so.
Councilor Banbury, you wanted to ask something? Go ahead.
Brad, I've been on council since a year and a half now. It has never come to this council table, what's happening with S V U, and that upsets me. When we're working on a project as big as this and we have a committee on it, we need to know what is happening with S V U. The public needs to know what's happening, so the public can get behind this thing. And all of a sudden, we're coming here and we're asking for $6,000, and we're going to entertain the idea of maybe asking Athabasca, the University of Lethbridge, University of Calgary, S V U to get back into the, into the functions. We have to make sure that our public is behind the decisions we're making and know where we're spending that money. So, you know, I, I, I'm in the total dark of what's happened with S V U.
Well, let me, let me comment on that. First of all, as a businessperson, when I start looking at a business opportunity, I'm going into it based on the fact that I don't know the whole story. I don't know because I've got to do my due diligence.
But you're spending your own money. You're not spending taxpayers' money, and we are spending taxpayers' money.
That, that's true.
If I might, Richard, this is one of those cases where I've been one of the representative of council on that committee. For the record, there's never been a bill submitted by me for any of those meetings.
Well, that's fine.
So just, just hold on for a second. So, and I know there's another council member that has never submitted a bill on this. To date, this has cost the town zero. There's been an immense amount of volunteer hours that have been put into this. Most of the delay that we've had on this has been because we were focused on going with S V U, to be honest. And when President Szabrowski, when President Szabrowski died, it obviously set us back quite a bit. But we were working through them to get some things in writing, so we had something to bring. Up until now, there's been nothing that has been of any substance that we could bring to council to say. This is where we're at.
Yeah, see, I would really hate to come to council, because I know that if I come with something that is smoke and mirrors, you're going to laugh at me. And honestly, I've said from the very first of the meetings, when President Szabrowski stood here and I asked him, and I said, because what they want us to do, Richard, is they wanted us to go out and get money, get an endowment set up, and start bringing funds in to send our youth to S V U in Virginia. Their reasoning behind that is if we get enough youth coming from this area to S V U and they end up being graduates, then you're going to have a perpetual thing starting to occur where those guys are going to say, hey, S V U's great, S V U's great, go, anything that's like that. Then, once they fill their 1,200 quota students, 1,500 or 12, then they were going to start to look at expanding. Now, that was the very beginning statements, but then it kind of changed. And President Szabrowski said, no, we don't care about that per se, but you need to get this fund in place. And so as the finance committee and being on that committee, I said, well, wait a minute. I says, how do I go get a guy to put in millions of dollars, but I don't have anything to tell him other than I'm sending these kids to S V U? I had no way to give them a tax receipt. I had no way to do things. And so we were sitting kind of back waiting so that we could have a face-to-face meeting in August with President Szabrowski and say, listen, if we get you this many dollars, because we've had, I went around, we've got the banks and a few other individuals have offered $6,000 of, of funding for a student, but I don't want to get that funding for the student and then use it unwisely and not how it was portrayed to be. So we have not got any of the funds from them, because I wanted a letter of commitment from the S V U saying, if you do this, this, and this, then we as S V U will provide this, this, and this. And we weren't getting that. So I didn't want to come to the town, and neither, neither did the steering committee, because at that point, all it was, was a dream and an idea. And in all reality, to me, and my honest opinion, I would almost, maybe at this point, I'd rather stay away from an S V U and look at what we have here. I mean, we have Red Crow College sitting out there how many miles from us? Basically, I, I think they exist, but I don't know to what extent. And I've heard rumors that, okay, can we do something with that? Well, maybe, I don't know that, but until we search that and investigate it, I don't know what we have.
So you're back to square one with the dream.
Exactly. And, and that's really, if we were being honest with ourselves, that's all it is at this point, because we don't have anything to come to the town or to the community and say, listen, we have signed at the basket, we have signed this from the education minister of Alberta, that if you do this, 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 and this, we will then let you be accredited and do this, this. I don't even know what those things are, but a guy like Mr. Wood does, who started the university in B C, who we know, who we've talked to. We have Mel Cottle, who has been very involved in education, actually taught at S V U. So we have many people in the community, Jack Adie. And I don't know that these men are on board, but to this point, there's no use in asking them unless we have something concrete, because until we do, you have too many. And then you have ideas of how to run the school. Well, there's no use in talking about the cafeteria, you know, the what's served at a cafeteria until you have the cafeteria.
Right.
So basically, what it came down to was, we have people who've said that they'd be willing to provide the time and their expertise to help. We need to be able to cover their expenses to do that. That's basically where the steering committee is at.
Because if, if it doesn't come, if it's not a positive thing, then it's done.
Yeah. Councilor Banbury, I appreciate your concerns regarding the open communication. Maybe we could have done better in this, in this department. It's quite, quite possible, listening to your comment. But I also think that if we don't give it the right shot...
It won't go anywhere.
We will never know if it's feasible or not. And $6,000 for feasibility study, as per se, we could call it that, expenses for feasibility study is very low dollar. It really is. Feasibility studies are $100,000 and more, really. So here we're talking $6,000 versus $100,000. And I'll take the $6,000 if I have a person that I can trust to move forward. And if at the end, the answer is, it's not feasible, so that will note. The dream is put to rest. It will not be a waste of money. It'll be money that we need to invest. It's an investment. And sometimes investment bear fruit, sometimes that don't. And that's a reality and truth of any business.
Well, and if the answer is know that it doesn't work, then that energy can be used somewhat.
So therefore, if someone is willing to put a motion forward, I will entertain that.
I'd be willing to move that we, based on the, I don't know how to word this one.
Allocate.
That we allocate some of the funding that we have from the Economic Development Board to the regional steering committee to further this, this project.
To a maximum of...
To a maximum of $6,000.
Comments, questions?
I, I'm not sure the question was asked. I think it was asked and I, I wasn't sure that we had an answer, but do we have someone in mind that could, that could do this? You know, that somebody, I mean, have, has any discussions taken place or...
Yeah, I've actually talked to Brian Stringham. He was actually at our meeting before December. He's actually waiting to hear from us. He actually used to be a principal here at the Carson High School, and then he worked as a, I'm going to call him a bureaucrat in the government, in the, in the education department. Now, this was quite a few years ago, but he knows his stuff as far as writing things and, and policy and so on that Alberta even uses today in their education and so on and so forth. He knows back then how the government worked, who they were, because he was behind the scenes. So I believe he knows then how to, one, get information, find information. He's also part of a consulting company that he's been with for a number of years, and they've done similar things. And they've done similar things in this area. He's very ambitious, he's very excited. He went, he says, I'm not going to do it unless, you know, of course, I talk to my wife. But he is 80 years of age, but he's got, I believe, some of the characteristics and the qualities that we need for a person that we're looking for. And I would recommend that before anything goes ahead, that we, as a steering committee, come back and say, you know, this is the person that we feel is the best qualified. And have the town council also be involved in that, in whatever way you'd like to, especially in approving that, because obviously, you're going to be approving expenses that this gentleman or lady incurs that, that are validated. But 90% of the stuff, as Bryant has told me, there'll be no expense per se because it's phoned. And, and a lot of it is going to be investigating and stuff like that. And then going from there. Then we can come and be more specific and say, you know, these are the directions we can go. I mean, I would love to be able to come to you and say, hey, Google wants to put a university here, and you use this and do it this way and blah, blah, blah. Well, that'd be great, because that solves a money problem and everything else. But I can't sit here and lie to you and tell you that's even a possibility. But these are the ideas actually that Bryant has come up with. Because he knows this Christiansen, for example, that is actually a member of the church, but he's written books and, and has got many things behind him. And he is putting out an, an education system that is very similar to what would possibly work in this area. And, you know, and especially if we work in online with computer and so on and so forth. I don't see us being, you know, an 8,000, you know, student campus type of thing. I'm looking at us being as a more modern type of learning, possibly more into the, the trades. Things that fit, that are needed, which would be in $100,000, possibly, what's the word I'm looking for? What are those things?
Snow white campus?
No, but when you do a.
Feasibility.
Feasibility. You know, the feasibility study is something that's going to tell us what's needed in this part of the country. You know, do we start like the college did and provide kids who do not have a high school education and degree behind them? Do, are we an in-between that and a university and start there and then move up? That's what I see. I don't see us being a BYU tomorrow. I see we've got to take baby steps and do it wise and, and fund it properly and make sure that it's self-sufficient. And then maybe it can become a driver for the community in the next 10, 15, 20 years. I don't know.
All right. Any more questions?
In, in a little bit of a way, we're overlapping what our adult literacy program is doing right now. Kathy Richards offering these, you know, these university and college programs through the, through the online situation.
Through path, I mean, or what do you mean?
No, no.
Yeah, adult learning.
Oh.
So, is, is she been involved? Has the school division been involved in any way?
Yes, the school division has been involved. Matter of fact, Ken Summerfeld and Nolan Olson sits on our steering committee. They were very gonpoh, looking forward to SVU and doing something. They, they tried to set up the recruitment process this fall, and SVU didn't even show up. So, can you tell that I'm not very pleased with SVU at this point? But given and saying that their president passed away and the new president's trying to get his feet under him, well, okay. But yes, we have the school division, Ken Summerfeld and Nolan Olson, who sits on our steering committee. So, they have been involved.
All right. Any more questions? We have a motion on the table. See none, on favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that and wish you all the best. I know Bryant approached me a year and a half ago or so at the seniors' meeting. We were there with, with Jeff Shaw, and I could see his excitement, his interest in the idea. And this was as if it was a member of your group, because I saw his name there on your letter.
Yeah.
And I wondered if he was a member or just was there as a guest that day.
He was just there as a guest that day. He hasn't been traditionally on the steering committee.
Thank you. So, it's interesting.
I was one of 200 students he suspended from Sky School.
That, that I understand.
You know, I'm glad you made it so far.
Fighting yourself.
Yeah, he's my neighbor now.
All right. Since that we don't have our next delegation, we will carry on with the adoption of the meeting of the December 9th, 2014.
Mary Cromer.
I'm sorry, did I miss a bit?
Let's back up a little bit. Since we're taking the funds out of this, out of these line items, do we need to review what's happening with these programs?
That will be part of the strategic planning. We can see how we're going to work there. And then if we need to review the budget subsequently, we will.
Okay.
Yeah. So, before March, we can readjust that item of business. Make sense? Okay. So, the adoption, thank you for asking. Adoption of the minute of December the 9th, 2014 meeting. Counsel Benry?
So, move that we adopt the minutes of December 9th meeting.
Thank you. Any questions regarding those minutes? See none, all in favor? Thank you. Now, further be, we need to adopt the minutes of the special meeting of golf course of December 16, 2015. Here is a little bit of where we might need to talk about 10A with it. In that, in, in that motion, there is no mention made, made a note somewhere, there is no mention made that the letter of credit or the bond were not needed for 2015. And we need to have, in addition to that motion, to clarify the fact that it is only for 2015, that we do not require the bond or the letter of credit, which then will clarify the further motion that says that eventually it will be required.
Then.
Counselor Benry?
Let me pass this on to you, Mary. And we can, we can fill it in under this item right here that I've gotten out, I think.
I wrote something there. Thank you.
Are you proposing the amendment?
Here we have further be resolved that the lease of be renewable subject to the management group being able to acquire a $100,000 bond or a $100,000 letter of credit. What maybe is required is.
Is the time date?
Is, maybe we need to, to have it be resolved that no bond or letter of credit in the amount of $100,000 be required for 2015 only. Then it, the next, the next further be resolved that clarifies that it is still required in the future.
So, this is just a one-year contract at this time?
Yes.
Now, Mary, it, it references a one-year lease in the first paragraph. So, I'm just wondering if maybe it isn't already, I mean, basically, according to this, we're, we're leasing the golf course for this year as a one-year lease without the requirement for the bond.
Yeah, but if you, if you read it, if you read the way it is written in the further be resolved, that is not very clear. It doesn't, it doesn't clarify the fact that 2015 is free. So, something like, let it be resolved that $100,000 bond or letter of credit requirement be waived for 2015 year only. That's would clarify the whole of this statement.
I, I think one of the, the keys there is, is that because they're taking over an existing contract, that, and that has a longer-term lease inside of that contract.
Yeah, it can be renewable.
That's, and so that contract has renewal clauses in it now. That's why I think it's important that we specify that this is just for 2015.
Yeah, that was my impression when I read it. And I went to administration kind of expressing that concern I had about the wording that we had. So, I gave you the wording. Would you be all right in having that?
If we just added it on to that further be it resolved?
Yeah. Further.
Additional, yeah.
Yeah. Further, let it be resolved that $100,000 bond or letter of credit requirement be waived for 2015 year only.
I think if we added that, then I'd be.
And I'll, and I'll leave that.
And further be it resolved that the lease be renewable. So, it's just adding another further be it resolved.
Above the current.
The regular one, yeah. That's what Counsel Benry said.
I would put it above.
Renewable, so, yeah, the, the second one is, is saying, is be, at least be renewable subject to the management group being able to acquire. In, in a way, to me, that says it, that it's, but if we need to say that we, it's not required for 2015, I think we could, we could.
I, I think just to, just to be legally correct.
I would agree with that.
So, who wants to move that?
Can you move that, Richard?
Counselor Benry, you want to move that?
Yeah, but I still don't have the wording.
I, I got the wording, and I think.
You just need to hand it out.
Could you, could you reread the wording?
The waiving of that bond for one year, 2015.
Yeah.
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 And we'll, we'll tap it on to the end of this, further be it resolved.
No, we can make it a separate, a separate clause.
If, if I might, my, my understanding is, is what our motion should be is for us to amend the minutes to say.
That that's what we intend.
This is what, this is what our intent was.
Yeah, we need to amend the minute and then vote on the amended minute with that clause.
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Wait, are we putting this first or second now?
Read them both.
Okay. Further be resolved that the requirement that the management group acquire a $100,000 bond or a $100,000 letter of credit be waived for the 2015 year only.
Correct.
Now, this, we take in mind that this is a motion already on, in place.
Yeah, it needs to be amended.
Motion 14-188. So, we're going to amend the motion.
Correct, that's what the Paul's got there?
Or not, or, yeah.
Okay. Madam Chairman, if I might, if you go back to the December 16th meeting, the exact wording of this motion was not defined by council.
Was not approved yet.
And I apologize, but that happens quite often, that we have to formulate the motion in the minutes.
The wording.
Which, the wording of the motion.
We're going to make a totally motion then.
No, no. So, that portion of the waiving of the fee, or the letter of credit was just missed in our interpretation of how that motion should have been worded.
And your recording of the.
Yeah. So, if I might, it's another, I guess, example of why it's important when you're putting a motion forward, that you be clear in the wording of the motion. Because it is, you know, especially a motion of this length.
Yeah.
I, I may be interpreted it different in the formulation of the minute taken than actually was.
Did we want to? I think when we, when we made the original motion, the intent was what we're talking about.
Yes.
So, it's, it's the recording of what our intent was.
Okay, so, here's my thought here is Counsel Barfus made the motion.
Yeah.
So, Counsel Benry is making a friendly amendment.
Well, we're, we're amending the minutes though, not all the.
Yes, because this has.
The intent of the motion was before we have it, we're amending just the minutes. And anybody here can amend the minutes. So.
Those are minutes.
So, basically, what we're saying is, is we made, this is the motion that we made, but it wasn't recorded the way we wanted it to. So, we're amending the minutes that say.
Exactly.
What it was that we said.
It's like any minutes of any minute.
If I may, just on the, as it was read, that was well done, Graham. If we, I would recommend we change the word acquire to supply, because as it's currently in the, in the leases that exist, they have to have it. We're saying they don't for this year, but then they have to acquire one next year. So, the word supply, I think.
Okay.
Would be, just change acquire to supply, and then read it back to us one last, last time.
Further be resolved that the requirement that the management group supply a $100,000 bond or a $100,000 letter of credit be waived for the 2015 year only.
And then, read the second clause then.
Further be resolved that the lease be renewable subject to the management group being able to acquire, to acquire a $100,000 bond or a $100,000 letter of credit.
Yeah, that's correct, the way it is. Are you satisfied with those changes? So, I need.
So, that fits between the first be it resolved and the, and the second further be it resolved. That's where that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so what we need now is to approve the minutes as amended.
Amended minutes, so that means we don't need to break it down?
No.
I will move to approve those minutes as amended.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Hold on a second. Hold on a second here. I thought Counsel Benry was already doing that.
He was proposing the amendment.
I'm, I'm just proposing it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
He approved the amended motion. So, did you vote?
Not yet.
Okay, let's try that again. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you had the last.
All right.
Now, excuse me for a minute.
Go ahead.
Mary, and in this situation, then, we're still going to label this as motion 14-188 as, as entirety now.
Right, because you're, all you were doing was amending the recording of the motion.
Right.
It wasn't an amendment to the motion.
Right, right.
Just to be clear. The motion that you intended was not recorded appropriately.
All right, thank you.
All right. Sometimes I think to catch my eye, and I sometimes think we need to fix those things.
There was a good motion for Barfus to begin with.
Thank you for all your work on that one. We're learning together.
That's right. It was never going to be a good one.
We got that recording brought up, that's right.
But we shall learn how to write those ourselves and so we can refer to that a bit better. Business arising, six. Age-friendly adult committee terms of reference. If you remember, we had asked for FCSS to kind of look into terms of reference. We have them. They've been put together by administration. What is required at this point is to have a counselor be part sitting on that adult committee. Adult means it, it does not have to be a meeting every week, but as required. So, if there is one in your, in our midst that has an interest, I'm personally interested. But if you are Counselor Creed, we'll be glad to have Counselor Creed. Mary, do we need a motion?
You should first adopt the terms of reference and then appoint the counselor.
And, and would you want a motion to appoint the, the counselor?
Yes.
Thank you.
It would become part of the committee assignments, and so there needs to be.
Yeah, and I will, I have an idea to, how to register all of them.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, we need to adopt the terms of reference for the age-friendly adult, age-friendly community. Is that the way they call it?
Clarification, is that a separate attachment, or is that just the items one through four under 6A in the background?
6A.
In the background? Because I don't have it attached.
I didn't see them written anywhere. That's.
Right.
It's under, it's under seven request for decisions.
Well, I have it on the 6A personally.
So, it's just those one through four, you ask written?
It's right here.
Right.
So.
I think what he's asking is where, where are the terms of reference?
Yeah, a counselor.
Before I approve them.
Jeff, the way it's written, it's written that you want four separate motions.
Counsel Peabody is correct. I'll indirectly direct my remarks to Graham, but 6A is missing from your council.
It is. It's missing from it.
Yeah. Do we want to table it then?
I will make copies.
Well, if these two, they have a physical copy, maybe we can glance at it or.
No, I don't have.
I can make copies shortly and go on to the next one, and then I'll bring these back up.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we will pass and wait for that to happen.
Great.
Um, let's, let's go to seven, requests for decision. Let's let's go to seven requests for decision. Those are.
Seven which, which one?
Seven A recommendation from CCW.
The snow road changes?
Those, that's part of it. So we're going to do seven A one. Southern Alberta Youth Ranch Days, if you remember, that was a donation of five hundred dollars.
Is that in the backgrounder? Because I don't have it here.
Yes, in the backgrounder.
Okay.
Counselor Barfus. For five hundred dollar donation.
Into the backgrounder.
Is that okay? You got it? That was.
Yep.
Okay. That was a motion of the five hundred dollar donation for that three day Southern Alberta Youth Ranch that we chose to support. So I can entertain a motion?
I will do a move that we follow the recommendation from the CCW to recommend to council to allocate the five hundred dollars for the donation from the donation fund for the 2015 Southern Alberta Youth Rains Days. Is that right?
Pretty close. That's good.
Good. Close enough.
I think Graham has it. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Snow removal routes, I must say kudos to the public, public works for having brought that forward and having looked at a better way to do business. That was driven by themselves and by the workers. I really appreciate their desire for innovation and improving efficiency. I really much appreciate that. So we need to approve that, Counselor Banger?
If I don't mind, I'll make a motion to approve the new snow removal routes as presented. Coming from the CCW meeting.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now, the campground contract. We may want to, Jeff, sorry about that. The campground contract, you did not have the response from the operator at this point, am I correct?
Correct, I was just looking for some formal, okay, they've reviewed it, we've talked verbally, but I I haven't heard back from them. I'd appreciate if this could just be tabled.
Tabled.
For sure. We're we're not that time sensitive on it right now, so.
Okay, so we need, okay, Counselor.
I move to table the.
Campground.
The campground contract for 2015 to another meeting till we get the information.
On a table, a motion, you should have a date, so table two.
For the next, the next council meeting.
January 27.
January 27. Uh, January 27, yes.
Question, question on that?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Banger.
Jeff, have we ever considered because of the job that the contractor is doing for us? Have we ever considered a two-year contract or a three-year lock him into that?
The one year is at their request.
Yes.
Or is it their?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, two years ago they asked us to go nearby. Okay, thank you, well, it's a good question, thank you. Now, seven A four.
Did we vote on that?
We do.
Okay. Vote on the motion, all in favor? Okay. Seven A four, this one with sadness, we.
Oh, I have a hard time voting on that.
All right, we need to separate that motion into two pieces.
I'll do the first one.
The first one needs to be the acceptance of the letter of resignation. Counselor Banger, would you like to put that motion forward?
Motion from the CCW meeting, moved by myself to recommend that council to accept Marion's resignation as a chief.
Administration.
Administerative officer for the town of Carson effective January 23, 2015.
Thank you.
I heard sixty.
I was listening.
2016.
Okay, with sadness, all in favor?
Now we've got to do a bylaw.
Thank you. Marion, that is not a pleasing motion.
Second one.
But we appreciate what you're trying to do. Okay, the second part, if you don't mind, we're going to have to deal with the second part after we deal with seven B. And it's going to become clear for you in a second. A seven B is called a bylaw, a bylaw 1630. It's a procedural bylaw, will require three readings and I hope we should be able to do that today. In fact, we need to do that today. And it's called a CAO bylaw. Within that bylaw, as you can see, there is a term there or sentence that allows us to appoint an interim CAO essentially. That is a standing policy that be a procedures policy. Hope we don't have to put in action too often. So we need to approve that one.
Marion. Sorry, Madam Chairman, just for clarification, when I was looking at doing the new CAO bylaw, the previous one wasn't quite as robust as this new one that's being presented. It very clearly outlines what the responsibilities of the CAO are.
Yes, I saw that.
But what the mayor's speaking to is allowing for the appointment of a CAO by resolution of council rather than the requirement of putting the name in the bylaw and having to change the bylaw. So that'll that will allow you to appoint the intern and then by resolution again appoint your permanent CAO.
Right. So that is, I appreciate you doing that for us. It's it's good and it's strongly worded, appreciate that. So essentially, we need to do first reading.
I move first reading on bylaw 1630.
Fifteen.
Sixteen thirty. Regarding CAO.
Regarding the CAO and the interim.
Called CAO bylaw.
Right. Well, it's, I mean, it encompasses both the permanent and interim CAOs.
I think if you call it just CAO bylaw as it is called.
Sixteen thirty.
All in favor? Thank you. Now we need to allow.
I'll I'll do second reading of bylaw sixteen thirty, the appointment of a CAO for town Carson.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Counselor Creed, do you want to?
I will, I will move permission for for third reading.
Okay, to allow third reading?
Permission to allow third reading on the bylaws.
Okay, all in favor? This is when you need a vote, a unanimous vote in order to proceed, and so I need a third motion.
I'll move for a third and third and final reading of the bylaw sixteen thirty for the appointment of the CAO.
Thank you.
For the town of Carson.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. Now we need, we can at this point proceed with the appointment of the interim CAO. So we need to fix, Counselor Barfus, would you mind?
Sure.
Okay. So that's the second portion of the initial motion.
So I will move that we appoint Jeff Shaw as the interim CAO effective January 23, 2015.
At to what date?
Until we have replacement.
Replace it, yeah.
Until we have a permanent CAO position built. Okay?
Indefinite.
Okay. Any question regarding this one? Sing non, all in favor? Thank you.
I should have had to do it the 24th because now I don't think he's my boss on the 23rd.
No, that was done intentionally for us. It's kind of our way of kind of getting back a little there.
Power struggle there for one day.
It's okay. You will have to settle that issue.
And you can wear casual clothes that day.
Okay.
And you can tell him, I'm still your boss.
Maybe we can carry on, our delegation is still not there, so let's go with A, the financial report. Those as a financial report as, excuse me?
You missed the planning session.
Oh, sorry, and one more term.
And we do have the terms of reference there.
So that's seven B, right?
Seventeen.
Planning session.
Planning session date, yes. Every year we do overview of our planning. And this is something that we take seriously because it can affect future budgets. So in that sense, if you could help us determine a date, Jeff, maybe if you want to start to throw some dates forward. Because at this point, Ms. Will ask you.
I am the boss.
I'm going to set it on a Saturday, just because.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if council has a preference, whether we do a couple of evening sessions or one three-hour evening session versus a Saturday. Demographically, I'm a little different than Marion and my Saturdays aren't always as free.
You go hockey, don't you?
No, I don't this this year, that's.
He has a family.
That's okay, just.
That needs to.
But I can definitely make a Saturday work if that's what is a preference of council. My feeling is with the refresher, you know, potentially a three or four hour evening session may be able to do it. We don't need to spend potentially the full day doing the refresher. We'll have a couple of delegations, we can hit on a few things and then then move on. So true to be told, my preference would be if we could do an evening session, I greatly prefer.
Jeff, are you thinking evening starting like four o'clock to eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Would that work with you or it needs to be at five?
Oh, no.
It's four o'clock.
Two o'clock in the afternoon work for me, I don't care.
When are we? It was a day out here.
Yeah, Counselor Barfus probably the one who has his his calendar filled up and Counselor Creed.
Especially February.
And you have yours filled too.
Are we talking this month or are we talking February or?
You tell me, give me a little time to prepare.
Okay.
Or I can redo that on the 23rd.
So so if we did it for like Thursday of this week, then we could just have Marion doodle.
Yeah, that's true. Anytime before next Friday, it would be wrong.
No, Thursday's no problem for me.
All right. Okay. Do you want to do it before the end of the month? That's a little tough for for Jeff.
I if.
Personally, I think if we were going to February, maybe end of February or third week in February, I think I would give Jeff a chance to to get himself organized there.
How does that work with you, Counselor Barfus?
Yeah, end of February starts to get a little problematic for me.
Right, because of the SBC season.
I'll be going on the 22nd of February too.
So the second week?
The 12th?
The 12th, 12th of February.
Now, when are we going to Calgary?
Brownlee is the 19th.
The 19th, okay.
Yeah. So we do have a council on the 10th. Yeah, we're traveling.
Okay. How many of you can do February the 12th, four four o'clock?
Is that a, is that a Thursday or Friday?
It's a Thursday. The 12th is a Thursday, Thursday's no work for me.
Yeah.
Okay, what about the, it doesn't work for you?
Oh, yeah.
Neither does it work for me.
So Wednesday, the 11th?
Yes.
Wednesday, the 11th.
Wednesdays are better for me too. Truly better.
Happy time for your father.
February 11th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They changed it, Counselor, to the 19th.
That's the day after the council meeting then.
Correct. So I I will, I will probably miss that.
Okay, but that's nobody, if you're missing it, we need you there. What about, what about the 9th?
I'm just wondering if it would work for the Tuesday, we don't have council in February.
You know something?
Typically, that's when I I schedule that Tuesday in Calgary because it's the only Tuesday during the month I can be up there on Tuesdays, so.
The 9th?
The 9th.
The 16th is a holiday.
That's family day.
Family day.
It's family day.
Yeah.
So is the 9th any good for you?
Nine is a Monday.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday before.
Can you do it on a Monday, would that work for you?
Just a second here.
I really would like to have that date pretty quickly.
It it will depend upon whether what my flights are, whether I'm going to be able to get a flight every other month. Early in the morning is crazy.
So is the 2nd any better?
Is the 7th or Saturday?
That's why I say.
Is the 7th of?
Saturday works better for me.
Yeah. If we write a card to the young Mrs. Shaw on the 4th, perhaps apologizing on Wednesday.
Saturday, the 7th for the 14th, well, not, I prefer the 7th over the 14th, but.
February 7th. Saturday.
I'm here.
Be the big guy.
Jeff, is 8 to 12?
Or 8 till noon?
Means the night.
Yeah.
Whatever gets us the subway. So we're doing it on Saturday?
All right. We need to approve the 7th, February 7th from 8 to.
Complete.
To indefinite.
Wait to finish till we have a new CAO.
All right. I need a motion to have that.
I'll move that we schedule our planning session for February the 7th from 8 until noon or until first.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.
You said 8 till noon, before we're finished.
We have our delegation.
You can always extend.
Go sooner.
Trevor Curtis is here from Tetra Tech.
So hang on just a second here, this is eight o'clock in the morning, right? Sorry.
Eight o'clock. Takes a minute, scheduling.
Just get out of bed.
Whenever, right?
It's about it. Whenever, we shall be efficient and hopefully by. By two o'clock, we'll be done. If we take breaks, if we don't, earlier on.
Okay. Got it. You have the floor.
Trevor, just to explain to you, this little camera there, it's just so that people who sees the viewing have a chance to see your face rather than your back.
No problem.
Okay, so if you like to use a podium, we'll be glad to.
Okay, so have you all had a chance to look at my report?
Essentially, the report is regarding the swapping of the hills on a golf course.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, which item is it here?
It's, yeah, should be.
It's six, it's 4C, sorry, 4C. It's a delegation.
Okay, so under the backgrounder, then, eh?
Yeah, and it's.
No, 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 there's a separate 4C, Trevor Curtis.
Better 4C, if you go 4C on your.
And there is a whole report that was written with recommendation attached to it.
Good.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. So what we did, we drilled some boreholes. Actually, we had initially drilled two boreholes in, I believe it was, I think, 2012. And then the decision was made at that time to postpone further work and analysis and I believe there was some discussion on your part, I'm going to go from there. But then in this summer, 2014, more movement was noticed and it started to get kind of bad in some areas and caused problems with the golf carts, the pathways and that sort of things. So that's when you retained us to to do our complete investigation. So we drilled two additional boreholes right on the slope. And in these new boreholes, we installed slope inclinometers, which is like specialized PVC pipe with grooves in it. You install it, install it vertically in the borehole and you grout it into place. And then we can come back later on with a special instrument that rolls down these grooves and then it just measures the inclination. And then you take measurements periodically and then it gives you a readout of how much the slope has moved and where it's moved and what direction it's moved, so. So that's what we did. And to summarize, basically, we saw roughly nine millimeters of movement per month. So we did two sets of readings and we're sort of interpolating. So we did a set of reading at 57 days and another set of readings at 98 days. So just, you know, taking an average monthly movement was about nine millimeters a month. So I would guess that it's going to slow down over the winter months with the freeze up and there's no irrigation going on and things like that. But then it would speed up again in the spring and summer, so. What are the yearly total movements? Can't say for sure, but, you know, could be in the range of 100 millimeters a year. Is what we said in our report. So with that level of movements, there is there's some ongoing concern for for safety on the pathways. Utilities, underground utilities, whether it's sprinklers or electrical lines for the sprinklers, I think that's that's mainly it, but that's all maintenance, we have a problem with maintenance issues. So from our end, just trying to figure out, you know, what's causing it and where do you go from here? We're fairly certain that this was historic. We're fairly certain that this was a historic, very ancient landslide that had stabilized. And we're talking like geologic time, right, thousands of years or whatever. And so, we come in, humans come in and we build our nice little town and build a nice little golf course and we start watering this grass like crazy. Well, it had stabilized, but those failure plains that were, you know, like a shear plain, right? We have one massive soil sliding one, talk of another one. Once that starts, you go to, you go from the soil's peak strength before it starts down to its residual strength, right? So, once you have that shear plain in place, unless something's done to change it back to its residual state, it's just gonna stay like that forever. So, all this extra water starts getting added to it and it's just gonna lubricate it and it's gonna make the massive soil heavier. And so, that residual strength that's there, it just isn't enough to hold it anymore. So, that's kind of where we're at today, so we're sliding down the hill again. So, what do you do? Where can you go from here? So, we had sort of outlined a few general principles to look at stabilizing it. Probably, most of those aren't gonna be economically feasible for the town. You know, adding a toe berm at the bottom is gonna be an enormous, like it's a pretty big slope and it would require an enormous amount of fill to be placed to stabilize that. I just can't see that being feasible for you guys. I mean, that's your decision, not mine, but, you know, you could, there's all, there's other methods where you can install some drains, specialty drains that are kind of purpose-built for this, that take water out of the soil, but, you know, in the geology that we have here, our clay and clay till soils have a very low hydroaloe conductivity, which means water flows extremely slowly. So, even if you spent, you know, a couple million bucks to put all these drains in, it might be five years before the thing actually slows down or stops. So, again, probably not very feasible.
You talked about overland watering and trying to slow that down as much as we could. That is probably the most feasible thing we can do.
Yeah, we can slow that down. So, one of the things that I notice with slope stability projects, I've done quite a number of them in Southern Alberta, is they tend to accelerate once they start because once it starts to move, it opens up tension cracks and then that's like an invitation for surface water, just flow right down in there. And then that, you know, gets down into the failure plane and kind of lubes it up a bit so it can slide even more and it just, it soaks into the ground and it, so it accelerates year after year. So, yeah, I mean, if you could close those up, you know, cover it over with some clay to prevent any more water from getting in, directing that surface runoff, you know, into like some kind of drainage ditch and, you know, take it away as quickly as possible, that would probably help a little bit. Whether it would be too little, too late, I don't know, but, yeah. The biggest thing is water management to this point. I would probably say that cutting back or stopping the amount of irrigation on the slope would also make a big difference. Thinking there, I also have some discussion on, sorry...
Oh, well, I just had, yeah. So, you're saying essentially if we do nothing, we have five, five years before this thing essentially is, you know, 20 inches further down and just really unmanageable? If we do something, we have, you know, we're putting that off, it's still inevitable, but maybe we can get 10, 15 years out of it, is that...
Possibly, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you can really cut back the amount of water that's going into it, it should slow. I don't know that it would stop, but it should slow down. Maybe it slows down enough that you can deal with it and that, you know, every year, every couple of years, you touch up your pathways to make them, you know, drivable again and, you know, maybe you reroute some of your irrigation lines so they're above ground instead of in the ground where they keep getting sheared off or whatever and stuff like that. There's probably little stuff like that you could do.
Okay. Councilor Creed, do you want to ask a question?
I'm still thinking about the questions. I'm thinking about if there are certain vegetations that can suck up water.
More vegetation will help for sure.
And my other one was kind of off the wall, I was thinking, well, just cover it all with artificial turf and then we don't have to water it anymore.
Yeah.
Well, maybe not so stupid.
Anyway, that's okay.
No, it could work. If you cover the whole thing in plastic or something, you know, some kind of layer that, and then you collected the water and took it away.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, that quick cost estimate will tell you that's probably not feasible, but that's, again, that's an option.
Councilor Bangwin?
Trevor, we're getting approximately nine millimeters of movement?
Per month.
Per month with the present watering, which is the underground automatic sprinkler system.
Yeah. And that's as measured from August to November.
Okay, so if we remove that present watering system and do a irrigation system on top of the ground, what do you feel that we can reduce the movement?
That's a really tough question to guess. Honestly, I think if you, like, if you stopped watering today and just didn't water for all of 2015, you would still see some movement.
Oh, yeah.
And you might not even see, you might not even see a reduction in movement until 2016 or 2017.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's got some, it's got that moisture in it that it's moving. And even if you stopped it, it's still got that moisture in it and it would take some time for it to slow down.
Then you also suggested changing the cart path from the present pavement or whatever it is to gravel or something like that.
Yeah, it would probably be easier to maintain if you did that.
Okay.
Not as nice for the golfers probably, but, yeah.
What if we, what if we move the tee-off box, not the men's tee-off, but if we use the ladies' tee-off box with the, with the vibration in the ground, is that gonna reduce the movement also?
You mean just from carts driving on it and stuff?
Yeah, and walking on it, moving somewhere that...
No, that doesn't indicate, no, it wouldn't make any difference.
All right, so, good questions. Any other comments, questions? Travis?
One other thing we have...
Well, I was just gonna ask, the, maybe it's in there, but the scope of the project that we've hired you to do, are we, are we done or are you continuing to monitor this for the 12-month period or...
We're pretty much done for our current scope.
Okay.
But the pipes are still in the ground. We asked for a little bit extra budget to take the second reading in November because of the amount of movement we read. These pipes can only take so much movement before they get sheared off. So, we said, let's do our second reading, let's do a second reading right away. And if you want, we can come back in the springtime and see if this, if the pipe hasn't been sheared off, we can get another reading, but...
But essentially, we know that the slope is moving no matter what. It's not going to change. Another reading is not going to give us another discovery that the slope stopped moving. It still will be moving.
Yeah.
Why still let Councilor Creed decide?
Right. So, I think, I think you enlightened us regarding that issue, that is a frustrating issue to us all because it's affecting a really beautiful golf course and we have to deal with it in some manner. And thank you for your recommendations. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other questions for me or...
Well, maybe just based on, so your experience as far as the remediation, the toe berm is gonna be our most expensive.
The toe berm is like, that's your engineered solution, you'll solve it.
Right.
But it's the most expensive and, I mean, like, do you have a million bucks on track to spend on this? I'm gonna guess probably not, right?
And then based on your expertise on this, as far as if we were to do some slope drains, what, what, what approximate budget would we be looking at for a project of that size?
It's gonna be probably comparable to the toe berm.
Really?
Yeah.
So, might as well do toe berm if you go to that expense.
Pretty much.
So, it's pretty much toe berm or please stop watering, that's all you can do.
Yeah, I mean, you could put in pile walls, like pile foundation walls, shoring walls essentially there. I mean, this is, this kind of stuff has been done before, but never for a golf course because there's just no money to do that, right? Where they've done this, it's like...
Houses that protect...
You know, like a multi-level apartment complex and, you know, there's tens of millions of dollars that stinks and they would do something like that, but, that's, that's big bucks.
So, shrubbery.
Any more questions?
Just looking at the profile, I was trying to, see, you know what, the depth of the, where the shear plain?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the report, go to, is it in the figures?
I'm just looking at the profile right now. Not sure where you got...
Appendix C, I think? Yeah, here it is. Yeah, so appendix C shows the deflections at the two inclinometers and it gives in an A direction and then you flip the page over and you'll see the B direction, so that's just on two different axes.
Do you have some?
I'm just looking for that.
Is those here?
Okay, I'm just trying to get there.
That's this right here, right? So, if you look at the first one for SI number one, it's just the first, the first one that's shown, and it'll show cumulative deflection in the A direction.
Maybe you need to just look at that. Okay, all right.
So, there's a line down the middle, zero, that's your baseline. And then there's a set of readings from October 14th, that's kind of red or pink, and then there's another set from November 24th that's blue. So, you can think of that line as being the pipe itself. That's what the pipe looks like in the ground.
So, it looks like it's kind of moving. Now, are the numbers along the side, is that your depth?
Yeah, that's elevation depth.
Elevations, yeah.
And then in horizontal direction, that's your deflection. So, this is in one axis, so, many of you guys took vector in physics high school or whatever, you can add the two, the two vectors together, so each, this is like a magnitude down the direction. So, you just, you know, A squared plus B squared equals C squared, you can figure out the total movements easy enough. And so, that's what I've done in the body of the report, there's a table and it averages about nine millimeters a month, so that's what I've given for that.
Yeah. It's moving.
Yeah.
Ten years, that's one week.
So, it's a month.
It's just 10 centimeters a year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, the depth of the movement, so where we have that shear plain, we're basically right just above the bedrock.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any more questions, gentlemen? No? Thank you very much for your report. It enlightens us, doesn't help us with the dogma, but...
Madam Chairman, I would suggest that you put this as an agenda item with your planning session to talk about what direction you want.
Yes, we need to make some decisions here.
So, no January administrative responsibility, is it?
Well, it's amazing how that stuff is gonna move into February, isn't it?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We don't allow that, yes.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You can see that that item of slope movement is really...
That's huge.
A huge problem in our town.
Yeah.
And now on a golf course, that's not fun. Anyway, we should...
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's go back to 8, financial report. Do you have the financial? Do you want to do the age friendly?
Could we, after a break, so I have time to read the, read the...
Yeah, we need a little bit of time to read that, if you don't mind. So, 8, financial report, November 2014. You have the report there. If you notice, you don't see the decrease yet in taxes receivable, but in December, there are quite a few accounts that have been cleared up, so that is good. We're still a little bit higher than what we were last year, but we're moving in the right direction. Okay. It's a little bit of a cyclical problem that taxes receivable, every three years, a house can be put on a block for sale for taxes. So, people make an effort to find their money to save their house, but three years later, we're at the same square one. So, essentially, you will see a cycle of ups and downs in that account. Councilor Pivoy?
Just a question to administration on, is the remaining budget for the pool slide donations that we expect to collect, is that reflected in like notes receivable or is that, does that show up in the budget?
The difference between budget...
The amount that we have collected?
Seventy thousand dollars? Do you have it inside there?
It'll be the difference between the budget and actuals on, in that revenue account.
So, doesn't, it's not reflected in, say, notes receivable or one of these revenue?
Because it's not identified as a receivable, it's just a budgeted item.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions regarding the budget? You can see we're pretty well online, we're pretty well, just as a point of reference.
This is November 2014, so you won't see the December numbers until after the year-end entries are open, so, yeah, you actually won't see that report till close to the end of the year, so, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, Jeff, can you tell us what kind of building permits we had in 2014?
No, but I think I...
I have the report.
It says here, oh, report.
It'll be in the next council meeting, that will be the report, yeah.
There was only three new housing starts in 2014.
Three?
Yeah, that's all. And no business, no business. There was some commercial, we had some permits under Republican institutions.
Yes. Okay. Three new housing starts. All right. I need a motion. Councilor Barrows?
I'll move to accept the financial report.
Thank you. All in favor? So, that's a November 2014 report. On that 9, committee and other reports, you have the list of motion that was made by council. Do you have any question regarding that? It's really for your information.
I just was wondering about the ORS meeting here, the very first item on there for the, obviously, we're waiting for Gordon Atkins to file his final documents. Where are we at there?
I can speak to that. Counselor Edmonds and myself are on the, on the committee for the MPC. We just met a couple of days ago and we just approved his, what was the phrase of what we approved?
Subdivision.
Subdivision, application, stipulations.
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you. We approved his conditions as met and then we, we accepted that, you know, if Gordon would accept two thoughts, recommendations from that committee. We're waiting to hear back from him. One of those, by the way, I can just tell you, one of them was that it was never really added, so we just kind of requested that it be written, that any damage you do to the golf course in constructing your projects, you repair at your own expense, right? So, for instance, there was that discussion about that little, those bathrooms with the plumbing and everything in there, the electrical. That could not be upset until the infrastructure had been completely duplicated somewhere else, then that could be upset. So, there would be no interruption of service or water or electrical. You can't just backhoe over that and then hope to fix it two months later. It would have to be all set up before destroying that.
Makes sense.
So, that was a stipulation added by MPC. The other one, I can't remember.
He still has to receive his approval...
Oh, right, his approval from the province, thank you. His approval from the province. For the, from the environment, that's right. And so, we basically accepted it all as completed, assuming that the province comes through with approval on their end. So, those were the two...
It has caveats.
Those were the two recommendations from MPC and that should be in Counselor Edmonds' report. If he doesn't write it, I'll write it, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Maybe you could coordinate this side.
You bet. Well, I think he said he would do it, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
You'll see that in two weeks from now.
Okay. You have a question?
Well, I have one and actually I, administration answered it for me, but I thought maybe I'll just share it with, with the rest of the council because it had to do with the adult materials bylaw indicates on here that would be on the agenda for January 13th, but it was, was this misfiled, it will be on the agenda for the next council meeting on January 27th. And I appreciate the, the administration had Lloyd take the copies of the bylaw to the businesses that may be affected by it so that they could, you know, have a heads up before we pass it, which I think is a great idea.
Good. Thank you. So under 10A, we dealt with it a little bit earlier when we spoke about the conference.
Madam Chairman, I just have a copy of the amended agreement that I'd like to hand out to council.
Please.
I just got this late Friday from a lawyer. I've sent it on to Dale and Ralph and I haven't heard back from either of them. I know that they have been out of town, both of them, so I assume that's why I haven't heard back.
If I may just ask, on that, in the discussion that it was, you know, what the terms were, did they give any objections to those terms?
No, they approved them.
Yeah, Dale actually called.
I got an email back that they agreed to the terms.
Do you have the email?
I didn't either, that's good.
Yeah, that's good.
No, yeah.
So this is a copy of the amended agreement and then also Ralph has supplied the updated asset listing, valuation listing. It doesn't, that's not the financial statement, it's that there is a value of assets. It was $320,000.
It stated that it was a non-encumbered, as of non-encumbered, do we?
Well, I haven't got it in a financial statement because they haven't done it yet, right? So.
So we do not know if they're encumbered or not?
Right.
Thank you.
All of those Dale told me that they would be unencumbered.
Well, you know, anything to back it up is good.
Yes, look, even to have that in writing would be.
Right. Because that's the whole point, right?
So Jeff, can you make a note just to.
Encumbered is what follow up. Encumbered, the second position, not good.
Thank you.
Okay. So it doesn't need approval because it's just that one of the terms of the resolution.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor, how do you want to go about, we do correspondence and we take a break and then we'll, we'll deal with the age friendly? Okay, all right. So correspondence, that's for your information. 11A from Safety Center, any question? No. 11B, Castan County Emergency Services, does somebody want to talk about that or are we okay with information?
Uh, one question, are we planning to invite them from here on out or?
I think that's what.
I think that's the plan. The plan is that at our yearly Christmas meeting, I'll be there.
Fantastic.
FCM, we need to know, that's an invitation, if I remember right?
Yes.
That's an invitation to the meeting that is.
I think it's an invitation to renew our membership.
FCM?
Yeah.
And we just automatically renew.
You renew that?
Part of the budget.
Yeah, right. Okay.
But just to remind you, there is the annual conference in Alberta this year, so.
Right.
The annual conference.
So it's like AUMAs at the federal.
Oh.
And then here in Alberta the other time.
And that is, that is something that I think if we were to send a delegate from our council there, I do not know that if all of us need to be there, those are really, at that conference, it's all what AUMAs works and resolution have been done that are brought forward and discussed. And the same is from other level of jurisdiction in other provinces. So they all bring together questions that are of interest regarding governance and municipalities issues that are dealt with at different, in different provinces.
FCM really is the lobby to the federal government where AUMAs is the lobby to the provincial. So it's just a different level.
For me, you know, the interest in going at all would be based on the educational seminars. Do we have a report of what those might be or?
They have not sent out any information on the conference other than a kind of save the date. If you remember, I kind of brought it in about November.
What I can tell you, all of that proceedings are online after the conference. You can find all the information, all the speech, all the resolutions are there.
All the handouts and everything, yeah.
Well, that's the way I kind of found some information regarding the education issues.
Excellent.
So.
I'd make a, I'd make a suggestion that if we do decide to send a delegate to this FCM in Alberta, it would be you, the mayor.
Well, I appreciate that.
Because you're directly with the Marathon Rees, you know, in this area. And that's, that's what I suggest. Where do they use the hold, they say they move them.
In every province. In every province.
Ontario and some, Ontario and some.
Right.
You have to look at your budget, but you may decide that you want more than one.
Yeah. Maybe what we need to do is at this meeting, decide how many delegates of this council we want to send.
I was just going to say, why don't we put that down as an?
I was just going to say, maybe just keep it in mind until the conference agenda is announced.
Right, and then decide.
And what the cost is, et cetera. We need to know all that.
It's difficult to make a decision. Okay. So we'll, that's an item we will keep an eye on. And Southern Alberta Recreation Association is for your information. Yeah, that's an invitation for staff members.
No, no, it's an invitation to bid.
To bid, yeah. To bid on the Southern Alberta Summer Games.
There was another copy that we have put to the Parks and Recreation Department or.
Yes, that was another one that they can.
We've done this before, haven't we? And when?
It's been quite some time.
It's been a while since we've.
I'm going to say 10 years probably, eight or 10. Or more than that.
Essentially.
Maybe this is something we need to talk about in our planning too.
That is something you want to take with your Parks and Recs because.
It needs to come from them because they're going to be the ones that are going to be doing the work for them.
That is something that we brought forward last year as a possibility and honestly, because of the need for manpower, the effect on the, on the organization as a whole, it's time consuming, it's costly, and can we truly benefit from it, that's a different story. So we need to look at all that and maybe those are questions you want to bring forward at your meeting.
I'll bring it there next meeting.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I think we will take a break.
Okay, I will make a motion that we take the five-minute break.
Five-minute break and we will come back and address five, no, 6A, okay? Motion to adjourn, to recess for five minutes. Are in favor, thank you. Thank you very much to the media. If you want to stay the other next few minutes, you're welcome. Afterwards, we will go in camera.